Thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Superintendent Murtagh, for the introduction of two wonderful students we have today from the Center School. Ms. Murtagh, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so pleased to introduce Sherri Estevs, and I want to thank her parents for being here this evening. Sherri is a 10-year-old 5th grader in Mr. Bellos's class at the Center School. She's the daughter of Wendy and Jack Estevs. Sherri's favorite subject in school is English Language Arts, especially reading. In fact, she calls herself a "book worm." Good girl, Sherri. Sherri also loves art and hopes to grow up to be a professional painter. Sherri's a member of the Center School Run Club. She also likes biking, rock climbing, bouldering, and bike riding. Her favorite season is fall. She also loves Victoria's dog, Chicken Nugget. Please join us up here, my friend. I also have the pleasure of introducing Victoria Weinberg, and thank her dad for being here this evening. Victoria's a 10-year-old 5th grader in Mr. Bellos's class at Center School. She's the daughter of Anna and Corbett Weinberg. Victoria has three older siblings: Sophia at PBD Veterans Memorial High School in 11th grade, Luciano, age 21, Paula, age 25, also attended Center School. Victoria's favorite subject is math. Victoria loves animals, especially dogs. She is also a member of the Center School Running Club, and she also loves walking in nature during all seasons. Victoria and Sherri have been best friends since 1st grade. Thank you, ladies, for being here this evening, and I want to thank Mrs. Orfanos for being here, and some of her staff members and families.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, girls. Girls, we need a picture. Girls, can I have a picture before you go anywhere? There we go, with the mayor. Mr. Mathia, and Mrs. Orfanos. Perfect. I'm good. I'll get Mom and Dad in the background, too. Moms and Dads. Thank you, ladies. And at this time, Mrs. Orfanos is with the girls, explain the PBD Gives for October.
Okay, so this month, Center School is leading the PBD Gives project, and we are going to start on Friday. We're going to be kicking off a district-wide red, white, and blue day where we are asking all students and staff to dress in patriotic colors. This has to do with our charity, which is Military Friends Operation Military Smiles Toy Collection. So boxes are being delivered tomorrow to all the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, and we're going to do a toy drive, working with this wonderful charity, and it is Operation Military Smiles. And it was founded by the Barrett family, who happened to be a Gold Star family. They lost their son, Robert, in Afghanistan, and he was killed in action. And so they wanted to put this tragedy forward, something positive. And so this fundraiser is for Massachusetts military families and veterans, and it's any families who have children or grandchildren who are associated with this. So these toys and gift cards will go directly to Massachusetts military families. So we're really excited to lead this fundraiser. And this leads right into our November Veterans Day celebration, where our 3rd graders get to perform and invite local veterans. So very excited to sponsor this PBD Gives project.
And that event, I remember I went last year, is it November 7th? Is that when the veterans come?
Yes, November 7th.
Yeah, that's a terrific event.
Yes, yes. And it's wonderful for our kids to really understand the purpose of Veterans Day. So this project just lends beautifully, so we're excited. And one of our wonderful parents, who is, I didn't know if she could come tonight, we have Tonia Costa, who is a Center School volunteer. She's a lieutenant colonel, and she just had a beautiful service that a number of Center School students and their parents attended down the Cape, where she changed her, I think she passed on her duties to another lieutenant colonel. And the kids got to witness that, so again, an extended part of their education. She helped me greatly. She got all these beautiful posters made, and donated all the collection boxes that are coming through, so we're very excited.
Thank you, Mrs. Orfanos.
Any questions for Mrs. Orfanos? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Orfanos.
Okay. And if there's no objection, we do have some students here, they're not as awesome as the Center School 5th graders, but they're pretty cool, our middle school students. If there's no objection, like to go to that report now?
Sure. I am pleased to first introduce our IT department. If I could have all five gentlemen join us. They're going to give us a little overview, and then invite our students, and Ms. Moore to join us, to speak a little bit more about what they're doing. Welcome, gentlemen. If you could just introduce yourself, and...
You're going here, because you need a mic or something.
Glad you all could be here tonight.
Hi, everybody. So we were asked to be here tonight just to kind of present some recent projects we completed, as well as a few things that we have upcoming in the next, I'd say, month or so, as well as a short presentation from some members of the START team here at the Higgins. I think most people are familiar with Mark and myself at this point, but I did want to recognize the rest of our team who's here tonight: Brian Condon, Sean Maholland, and Melvin Martinez, who is our newest member, who's been with us for about a week and a half. We are thrilled to have him on board and be back at full strength. So that said, the most recent, you know, major project that we completed over the summer was our capital project, which was a complete overhaul of the entire phone system for the district. This went on for the better part of the summer. The abbreviated version of it is that we replaced upwards of, I'd say, about 600-plus phones, the equipment onsite at each location that actually runs those buildings and ties them all together, and then, you know, quite a bit of additional wiring and, you know, network changes and things like that to actually accommodate the new equipment. So that's kind of the short version of a very long project that we're happy to have completed and up and running.
So a couple of projects that we have upcoming. The first one is, we've come to the refresh portion of the technology plan, where now that we have all the equipment that we originally talked about getting into the schools and the classrooms finished, we're now looking back at the original part of the plan where we look at the year one and see what equipment is still working and what needs to be replaced in order to just keep the tech plant rolling. So we're looking at doing a refresh of the classroom technology in all of the 5th and 4th grade rooms. We are releasing that technology over a three-year span. That would include getting four Chromebooks in each classroom for station-based learning, as well as a new device for each teacher. They all still have working projectors in all of those classrooms, as well as presentation carts that they can lock all of their equipment up in. But that's the major, that's our major project at most of the schools. Now, we are planning a pilot at the two 5th grade schools. The two that won, that drew the, not the short straw, but the long straw, I guess. At the Brown and the Welch, they are going to be piloting a one-to-one 5th grade. Basically, how that would work, and a lot of other school systems have tried things like this before. Instead of having shared carts, most schools have a 5th grade cart that they roll between all the 5th grade classrooms, they check out as they need it, and they all share it. This would be a model where you would have 28, well, whatever the enrollment of that classroom is, amount of Chromebooks in a cart that stays in the classroom, in that 5th grade classroom. Each Chromebook has a student's name on it, so that is their Chromebook. They don't take them home in the 5th grade like they do at the middle school, so it would be an in-school one-to-one. But that would be something that kind of gets them ready for coming to the middle school, and what that's going to be like when they have their own Chromebook that they're going to have to take care of even at home. It allows them to start the process of, this is my Chromebook, I own this Chromebook for the year. When Mrs. Smith tells Johnny to go get his Chromebook, he knows this is my Chromebook in slot 3 for the whole year, and it starts to build some of that personal responsibility, and it gives them a little bit of ownership of the technology as opposed to sharing something with many other students. So that's something that we were able to accomplish because of some of the Chromebooks that are at the middle school from the original Higgins project, that are now outside of the warranty, and they basically spare Chromebooks at this point, that are not really, not really great to use for a dated, a take-home at the middle school still, but they still have enough use that we want to try to get some more life out of them. So this is a project that we thought would be a worthwhile pilot, to see if this is something that the teachers like, and we can kind of get some feedback from them and see if we proceed on a larger scale, if possible, in the future.
So the final thing we wanted to touch on was our involvement in our parent information center, that, also a pilot over the summer. I think everyone's fairly aware of what that entailed, but basically there were representatives from multiple departments within the school district, where parents could basically kind of have one-stop shopping for everything they could possibly need to do for their students, as opposed to driving around to, you know, three or four different locations. So our involvement in that was basically, we had six, I believe, stations set up in the room where we ran it. Parents could come in, they could go through the registration process, they could receive assistance if need be, and we had the six, as you all know, the students get new devices in 6th and in 9th grade. We had devices on hand that we could actually hand out to people as they came in, whether they did the registration process on-site, or if they had done it ahead of time at home, and just came in and showed us the, you know, verification that they gone through it. And I'd say, between the 6th and 9th grade, we ordered 900-plus Chromebooks to roll those out last year, and I think we probably got about, probably close to half of those out the door prior to the beginning of the school year. So that really cut down on, you know, normally that process goes on throughout the first week or so of the school year, where all the students come down to, you know, a designated location, or we do it during orientation at the middle school. Trying to hand out that many devices, you know, can get chaotic, so this really kind of made the process for us a lot easier at the beginning of the school year, to get that much equipment out prior to day one. So that's something we're looking forward to, you know, continue to develop with the other departments that were involved, and the superintendent. And I mean, from our standpoint, I think everyone else is in agreement that it was definitely successful, so we're looking forward to, you know, continue to build that out.
And I'll add also on the PAC, not one single day went by where we didn't have at least one parent leave that said, this is so amazing, I'm so happy that you did this. And I really, really felt like it was, they really got a lot out of it. But, so we, as I said, like, the IT team is here today, and we definitely want to make sure that the entire IT team was represented, which includes Emily Moore, our digital learning coach, and our student, our students in the START team, so we got a couple of representatives from them to kind of talk to you about START a little bit more, and what they're doing this year, and some of their projects.
Get your seats, I can't wait to hear from you. Yeah, okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Emily Moore. I have met everyone, and most of you know that our START team, our Student Technology and Systems Resource Team, really works at our help desk and repairs Chromebooks, and really supports our IT team. But these guys do so much more, and our program is way more than them sitting behind that desk over there and working to repair Chromebooks. So when I threw this out there, to see who wanted to come talk to school committee and present what we do in class, and the other pieces and parts to our program, they were all, like, jumped at it. Like, hands went up like crazy, and they all said they wanted to come. So these guys are here, they're going to let them all introduce themselves, they're going to talk a little bit about the skills and the other projects that we do in START. And I'm going to excuse myself, because they're way better than I am.
I'm Tenley Muckford, I'm one of the members of START. And one of the many great skills that I've learned from being a member of START is leadership. As well as sitting behind that desk and doing all of the help desk and repair, we also spend our class periods doing projects and activities. When we do these projects and activities, we are more of a teacher-guided and student-driven activity, like, we do these activities as students and as a team, instead of being taught and given directions by our teacher. We, sorry, excuse me. We are told, what do we want to do, instead of, here's all of your directions and do this with this person. We are also going to be mentors soon to the younger START members, who are going to sit behind the desk and do the same thing that we do at the help desk, so they can hopefully learn these skills, too.
Hi, I'm Eva, and I'm one of the members of START. And one of the amazing skills that I've learned throughout this program is teamwork, because it's a very small group of kids, and not many of us knew each other prior to being put into this program, so I've made some great friends throughout it, and we all had one similar interest, which was great. And obviously, nobody's the same, so we had many differences, and we all had different opinions and different ways to work through different problems. But through this program, we got together, worked through them, figured out our directions to get to a destination, and overall, it's a very important skill to have in life, because nobody, not everybody's going to agree all the time, and it's something you have to work through. So I think that's a great skill that I've learned through this program.
Hi, my name is Nikos, and throughout START, I've been given numerous incredible opportunities. One of my favorites being going to the 6th grade students and teaching them about digital citizenship and how to be safe online. And through doing that, I've gained communication skills that I will use throughout the rest of my life. Each START student is assigned a help desk shift throughout the week, and as a team, we communicate using Google Hangouts, because if one of us cannot come to our help desk shift because we have missing work in a class, or we need to meet with a teacher, we let each other know using that app. And before START, public speaking and even talking in large groups was a bit out of my comfort zone. However, working with the other members of the START program, I now feel more confident and comfortable when presenting, teaching, and talking with my peers.
Hi, my name is Bobby Shaw, and one of the skills that I've learned throughout START is my social skills have greatly improved. Every day, working at the help desk, whether you're talking to a customer, communicating on how to do a proper repair, you're still talking to people, and you're figuring out ways to handle situations that you wouldn't normally know how to handle when you're in a workplace later in life. And that's a great skill that I think all of us have learned throughout START, and it'll be very useful in the future.
Hi, my name is Bruno. One of the many skills that I've learned throughout my part, or throughout my time being a member of START, is the ability to take risks. Before being a member of START, I would have never been able to build up the courage to be in front of you guys and talk to you guys tonight. Another time where START has taught me to take risks was when we were teaching the 6th graders about digital citizenship. Public speaking is out of my comfort zone, too, as Nikos said. But being a member of START has not only taught me the ability to take risks, but not, but to not let fears control you.
Well, I would have thought this was a public speaking club that you guys are at. That was excellent. You each expressed yourselves very, very well, and what you've learned, you've each expressed very well, so I want to thank you for that. That was terrific.
We missed the almost call about how...
Yeah, no, that was, that was really outstanding.
So I really also want to draw attention to, you know, our program is successful because of the flexibility of my position and the partnership, working with Mark LeBlanc and working with the IT, really the whole IT team, because these guys are better at repair than I am now, so the fact that we really all work together makes this program really successful. Just, it's unlike anything else that other schools have, so, you know, just so proud of these guys. Tomorrow, some of these students are traveling to Gillette Stadium to present at the Masque Technology Conference and talk to other educators throughout the state, which we've had some in the building that come to try and emulate our program that we have, to learn about how, the steps that we took to set up this program, and how we manage it here at Higgins. So it's really an impressive thing that these guys do. These guys do such an amazing job.
How many students total?
There are 32 students between 7th and 8th graders.
7th, okay. Terrific. Well, that was great. Do we have any questions for our students, or for Mrs. Moore? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I want to welcome you all, and thank you for coming, and you all did speak beautifully. I mean, I would think you could come to our meetings regularly and sit in our seats. Your ability to public speak exceeds a lot of people's in this room, including my own. As well as your technology advice, I'll just say that I haven't been able to help my son, and he's in 6th grade, and I've sent them to you, like, seven times. So thank you so much. I appreciate it, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Olympio?
I just want to thank all of you for coming.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................